Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, February 12, 2020. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. With me at the dais today are Councilmembers Palmisano-Johnson, Ellison-Schrader, Councilmember Conno, Reich, Fletcher, and Cunningham. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum from the committee today. And colleagues, we have one item on the Race Equity Subcommittee agenda today relating to a racial equity analysis of the Neighborhood Association operations and activities. And I will invite staff from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to start their presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Mo.
Good afternoon, Council Vice President Jenkins and Councilmembers. I am, first, let me introduce myself.
Excuse me, Ms. Mo. Before we begin, I just want to let my colleagues know that we will be using the Speaker Management system today, so if you want to log into that, I'd appreciate it very much. My apologies.
No, not at all. My name is Karen Mo. I'm Deputy Director of Neighborhood and Community Relations. We're here today to request Council to receive and file the racial equity analysis of neighborhood associations and their activities. First, I want to say thank you for having us here. The Neighborhoods 2020 work that we're going to be discussing today actually resides in the Peace Committee. We normally would be presenting it there, but we received an invitation to present it here at the Committee of the Whole because we understand all of the Councilmembers are interested in hearing, having the opportunity to hear the presentation and ask questions. So, thank you for the opportunity today to do that. I'm going to set a little bit of context for today's presentation before I introduce C. Terrence Anderson from KIRA to actually do the presentation of the racial equity analysis. As a reminder, in May of 2019, the City Council adopted the Neighborhoods 2020 framework that our department brought forth. Along with adopting the framework, Council directed the City Coordinator's Office to collaborate with a consultant on the next phase of that work, which included conducting a racial equity analysis as well as bringing forth program guidelines. The City Coordinator selected KIRA as part of this final process. Just want to remind everyone that the Staff Directive included a whole handful of deliverables that we will be coming back to Council with. This is page one of those. This is page two of those. For today's presentation, we're not going to be bringing back all of those. But along with the deliverables, there were a handful of parameters that Council set regarding this work, including maintaining the 4.1 million allocation, as well as making sure that whatever was brought back was aligned with the racial equity analysis. And for that reason, we're here today to present the racial equity analysis so that as we move forward into the next phase, we have some context for what we're trying to align the program guidelines with. For today's presentation, though, we're here with one of the deliverables. So, just the racial equity analysis of Neighborhood Association and operations. I know that there's a lot of questions regarding the guidelines as well as funding formula. We will come back. We will have that presentation. But for today's purpose, we're really just here to receive and file the racial equity analysis. So, we'll ask you to focus on those questions today. C. Terrence Anderson, who's the Director of University of Minnesota Center for Urban and Regional Affairs, will be presenting that information. Before I turn it over to him, I do want to just make sure that you all know the timeline moving forward. So, after today's presentation, we will continue to meet with the Steering Committee, which is made up of different representatives of the city overseeing this work. Our hope is to have program guidelines that will be released publicly February 24th that will initiate a 45-day public comment period that will close April 10th. My apologies for the mistake in the PowerPoint. It's April 10th that it will close, after which we will make any revisions that are necessary. And then we will be coming back, hopefully, to the May 4 Peace Committee, presenting the proposed program guidelines moving forward. And that will include the guidelines, the goals and outcomes, as well as a logic model, and the rest of the deliverables in the Staff Directive. With that, I'm going to turn it over to C. Terrence Anderson to actually do the presentation.
And while you're approaching the dais, I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Council President Bender and Councilmember Gordon.
Can you hear me if I stand up straight, kind of like this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having me here today to talk about KIRA's racial equity analysis, Neighborhood Association, Neighborhoods 2020 work. Very happy to do this work. We've been happy to partner with NCR in doing this work. We've been great partners, as well as a number of folks around the city who have helped fill in going through this work. But without further ado, we'll just sort of jump into it. So, the first thing I want to go through is kind of what was our process as a research process. One of the biggest things was doing a literature review. I just brought this for a show. There's been a lot of literature written about NRP since about 1990, I think, was the first report. And so, we did a deep dive into each of these reports and the data that they had, and we're presenting that as part of this work as well. We also did an analysis of NRP I, II, as well as CPP funding allocations. We also did an analysis of representation across the city. We also did, looked at a draft developed formula for Neighborhoods 2020 program evaluation or allocation. It's more used for the purposes of analysis about what would a racial equity formula look like in the context of doing Neighborhoods 2020 work. We interviewed folks from around the city, both including staff, folks in Neighborhood Associations, folks in not Neighborhoodd Associations. And so, really, all of those things sort of are part of this racial equity analysis. I encourage folks to ask as critical questions as you possibly can. I think that's an absolute good thing, knowing that this is an extremely difficult subject, as well as knowing that, you know, NRP, NRP II, I won lots of awards around the city. So, I can sort of understand the sort of feeling that some of this might be hard. But I encourage folks to ask as many critical questions as you possibly can.
Excuse me, Mr. Anderson. And while I encourage folks to answer, to ask really critical questions, I do want to just acknowledge that we have another committee meeting directly after this meeting, the IGR Committee, and then this room will be needed for Charter Commission, EET Committee meeting directly following that. So, if we can keep our comments as expeditiously as we possibly can, it would be very much appreciated.
All right. Sounds great. So, the first thing to really go through, I first want to sort of submit what KIRA's racial equity framework is. But I suspect about a lot of conversations about racial equity, if I was to ask you to each write, each write down your definition of racial equity, you might get a bunch of different responses in the room. So, we want us to submit what we sort of look at racial equity. What is the lens that we look through racial equity? We believe that racial equity is three parts. It's contextualized, it's community-centered, and it's reparative. Contextualized means that we understand the history of what happened in order to really understand the direction that we need to go forward. Sometimes I like to make the joke, if you were to get to my house in North Minneapolis and you put it in Google Maps, and you said, "Hey, I need to see Terrence's house on 33rd and Morgan in North Minneapolis," and you put in, and you said to Google, and Google said, "Well, where are you coming from?" And you said, "Oh, that doesn't really matter." Google would say, like, "Well, I can't really help you with that." So, similarly, in racial equity, we really need to understand the history of what happened in order to, in order to understand the direction that we need to move forward going forward. Community-centered means that the folks that were most negatively impacted in history are front and center of the imagination and co-creation of the work going forward. And so, I think oftentimes in this community, knowing sort of our racial construct today, that means Black Indigenous and other people of color, as well as renters in particular, and other historically marginalized folks, really need to be at the front and center of the work. And then, three, it's reparative, meaning that we are trying to find solutions that are equal in impact to what caused the inequities in the first place. So, sometimes I like to joke, we don't exchange. If I took your car, I let your car, and I threw it into the Mississippi River, one, that's an EPA violation, right? But, two, you'd be really mad about that. And if I came back a number of years later and said, "Here's a pair of shoes. I'm really sorry for what I did," you would say, "That's not good enough, right? We want to replace a car for a car," or maybe really good public transportation or something like that. So, really, I just wanted to set that framing, which, of course, we can dip into more. But really, we're looking at racial equity as work that is contextualized, community-centered, and is reparative. We can talk more about that. So, jumping into our analysis, this slide shows where all the funding went since 1990. So, from 1990 to 2019, the darker the color, the more money that folks got, and the lighter the color, the less money that folks got. So, I'm not going to really get into the wide history of NRP. I think folks at this table know the wide history of NRP. I'm certainly not probably the greatest historian of the project, of the program. But obviously, NRP drove this funding more so than CPP did. I think it was $280 million over the course of 1993 to 2009, I think it was. Of course, CPP's been around since 2010. That's been $4.1 million a year, where for most of the years of NRP, it was $20 million a year. So, what you see up there is largely driven by the allocations of the NRP program. Folks could use that money to do a wide range of things, right? It was built into, I think, at least nine distinct categories ranging from parks. But of course, housing was the largest portion of that money. By law, it was 52.5% of the funding had to go to housing. Some of it was meant to spend on rental housing, but the large majority of it went to single-family home improvement, whether that was down payment assistance, or that was loans to fix up your house, or a lot of variety of things that had to do with single-family housing. And so, we really focused a lot of our analysis on that housing portion of it because, one, that's where the data was in terms of tying outcomes to racialized and racialized disaggregation. But obviously, you know that we're, we're not going to talk about all the good things. I think folks can talk about all the good things. We're really going to center on where was, from a racial equity perspective, benefit or harm. So, that's one really big thing. So, on representation, I don't think I'm going to spend too much time on this, but I think it's very quite clear. Nearly universally renters and Black Indigenous and people of color are underrepresented on the boards of Neighborhoodd Associations. Of course, there are some exceptions, but as a system, renters, Black Indigenous, and people of color are underrepresented across the city. I think one of the things that we found in history, actually, my boss at KIRA did one of the earliest studies of NRP in 1994, sort of talks about this notion that NRP really drove the representation on a lot of Neighborhoodd Associations. So, at a time before NRP, there was sort of this more diverse coalitions of people. But then, once, of course, at the time, it was $400 million over 20 years, this money was going to be spent. That motivated in particular white homeowners, property owners, including landlords and business owners to really come onto these boards and really make sure that their interests were really being met. And so, I think, I think that's a very important point to show the role of which investment might motivate changes, even if the program was constructed in a more diverse fashion. It sort of changed over time. But further on these points, to ratify action plans, one researcher found that, on average, less than 2% of neighborhood residents attended those meetings, with lows of 0.4% and highs of 3.3%. Mainly middle-income, mainly white homeowners dominated the process. I think that maps onto today. That's mainly who is in Neighborhoodd Association boards to this day. And it's what, and I think first and foremost, this researcher commented, first and foremost, NRP was conceived, if not explicitly, then implicitly, as a program for homeowners. So, I think I've talked to some of y'all, as well as talked to other folks in the committee, this was at a time in which homeowners were fleeing to the suburbs. Sometimes we call that white flight today, as well as the housing market was unstable. And so, NRP was a mass investment into the city to stabilize the housing market, in particular, the homeownership market. I don't think I would disagree with you saying, like, did NRP do that? I think there's a lot of evidence to say that NRP had a huge, huge hand in making that happen, right? We have one of the highest homeownership rates of any city across the country. But I think we also know at the same time that, that there's the widest gap between Black Indigenous and people of color owning homes and white residents, right? And so, I think similarly, in this program, while we can enjoy a very good thing, a stable housing market, it's not stable for all of our members in our community. Similarly, not all members of our community were part of the process for NRP I and II. I think that continues today in Neighborhoodd Associations as well. In some cases, some researchers found that NRP plans might be sardonically described as an outright attack on renters. So, we can name, like, in very specific cases where Neighborhoodd Association boards were sort of formalized around developing low-income housing buildings. Those boards flipped in sort of the next election after NRP comes around. Some of the first things that they did was, we're not doing any low-income housing project. We're actually not going to focus on renters by and large. We're going to do more work around stabilizing the housing market, particularly from a single-family home perspective. I'm sorry, did you have a, oh, I thought you were raising your hand. I think we know from research, we estimate that anywhere between 1,200 and 1,400 rental units were created over the course of NRP. And then, there's probably been about 6,000 to 7,000 loans to single-family housing over the same course of project. So, about a 1 to 5, 1 to 6 ratio over the course of the program as a whole.
Excuse me, Mr. Anderson. I just want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Goodman, and we are using Speaker Management. So, if people want to ask questions, please queue into the Speaker Management. Thank you.
So, getting into the beneficiaries of the program, for one, to say that there's not a lot of data in history firsthand that we can analyze that maps outcomes to race. There's really two main data sets that we can consider. That one was CEE, which was one of the managers for the NRP Housing Program Funds. So, we analyzed that. That covers neighborhoods that are generally across the city, pretty representative across each of your wards, as well as the NHS, which is another manager that mainly focused in on the north side. And so, I'm going to talk about both of those. But then, we also considered other data in our literature review, what other researchers were saying. So, the first, what you have on your screen right now is the CEE program data from January 1st, 2013, to about October of 2019, so just last year. And this, this slide shows all of the applicants to that particular program. And so, you can see 77, or in applicant one and applicant two, you can basically read, like, a person who was the lead applicant to that particular loan, and then applicant two may be a spouse or a partner that they're applying with. 67% of folks that applied in applicant one were white, 17% for Black folks. You can kind of read on down what it is. But I think what, really what gets interesting is when you look at who was funded in that particular program. So, right, it goes from 67% white applicants to 77% white folks who were funded, and you can see on down the list. And as a reminder, today in the city of Minneapolis, about 63% of people of, in the city residents are white folks. You can see this over-representation, this disproportionality towards white residents in particular in the CEE program. Going next to the NHS data, which, there's another editorial that talks a lot about this, whether we analyze it or not. So, just to show it to you in front, this Northside Home Services, which covers the Jordan Harrison, near north of Willard Hay, and there's also the Cleveland Neighborhood, which it looks similar, and if you read the full report, it just didn't fit into the slide neatly. You can see across the different neighborhoods what that looked like. So, of course, it looks better for, for Black folks, of course, who are primarily concentrated on the north side in the city of Minneapolis. But if you sort of, kind of go back and forth across the different demographics, and we're mapping from the year 1993 to the year 2003, and we're using 2,000 census data to look at the demographics of those particular neighborhoods, you'll also see the over-representation or disproportionately funding white folks in this program.
Excuse me, Mr. Anderson. We have a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to save up my questions and, you know, do them in a group. But I'm interested in the data with regard to CEE. That's, is that the only organization whose loans you looked at? Because CEE was something that happened more during the $4 million period than the $20 million a year period, so pre CCP. I hate using these acronyms.
Sure.
You probably do, too.
Sure.
But I mean, CEE is not the only organization that did home lending. What other organizations during the second, or the, I don't know what to call it, I hate to call it the CPP era.
Sure.
But the post-NRP era, did you look at as it pertains to loans? Because NHS's own data shows that 56% of the home loans and grants went to Black or African-American households, and 37% went to white households.
Sure.
So, the data's different in all sorts of different places. It seems like you picked the data to create an outcome.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting comment. For one, I think into your, your question about analyzing other data, for one, there was pretty poor record-keeping overall for the program. And so, very rarely did any of the program managers take data in particular that disaggregates by race. So, really, there's two core data sets, both of which were analyzed in the context of this. Yes, I think, I'm not sure if you're making a point there, is all of the housing program funds come from NRP. None of them come from CPP. So, I'm just, make sure I'm parsing what you're asking.
Yeah, you are.
But to the last question, I think that's exactly why we disaggregated the NHS data into the particular neighborhoods based off the demographics of those particular neighborhoods. So, say for an example, in the Harrison neighborhood, or let's use a better example, in the near-north neighborhood, which gave 57% of their loans to African-Americans, and they're 58% of the population, they give 33% of their loans to white folks, who are 15% of the population. I also think that it's, I think we often make these conversations about, like, Black folks and white folks. It's worth always mentioning in a city who are those other racial categories for Hispanic folks, Hispanic or Latinx folks, as well as Asian folks and Native American folks, who are systematically very underrepresented in the data that we have to analyze. So, I think that, no, we didn't cherry pick because we asked for all of the data from the city of Minneapolis that tied racial outcomes to race, and that's what we got. And so, there's literally no data that's in our, that the city has that is not in our report, and as well as, I think, the important point is about disaggregating on the basis of demographics. So, what I'm talking about is the disproportionality across for white folks in the data that we have, and I think that's important.
Madam Chair. Mr. Anderson. I think the general gist of the problem is, during the NRP period prior to CCP.
Yep.
There wasn't good data at all.
Correct.
Because the program wasn't focused on equity.
Sure.
And no one really kept that kind of data.
Sure.
And a mass majority of the money was spent during that era, '93 to around 2000. So, then to look at a very small set of data after we moved into CCP, and then to look at one organization, Center for the Energy Environment, and say, "Well, here's when we started collecting it and see it sucks," is kind of like to ignore everything that happened during the NRP era. And if you talk to the neighborhood folks who are less than thrilled with this report, and I'm, I'm, when you have a respectful, when we all, not you, I don't mean that you.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
When there's a respectful conversation about it, I think what they would say is, "Don't discount the work that we did. We feel like you're calling us racist because you're saying you didn't do something that we think you should have done, and now we're going to punish you by saying you shouldn't get any money going forward." And so, this data issue is a red herring to what I'm saying is the larger issue, given all of the correspondence I've seen. And so, I, I think we would stipulate to the fact that NRP did not track data. We didn't ask people to work primarily in communities of color. There was no equity basis. Everyone will stipulate to that.
Sure.
I wasn't here when the program started, and I know I've been here a long time, but it went on for 10 years before I even got here.
Right.
I think that the breakdown is that the study, your study overall, has created a situation where people feel shamed for what they've done. And so, I don't know that any of this data is really meaningful to us because it doesn't create a big picture of what happened during NRP when the bulk of the money was spent.
Right.
And it looks at one organization and what they did when a tiny amount of money was spent comparatively. Would you agree with that, or do you disagree with that?
Well, so, I guess I would just offer this. Let's consider what researchers have been finding for the past 30 years. So, not just what we've researched or what we've analyzed in the data that's available for us, but also what the stack of researchers said for the past 30 years. So, for an example, one analysis that studied all of the housing and loan and grant programs from 1993 to 2000 estimates that 88% of all the recipients were white, at a time when the city of Minneapolis was 78% of population. In the majority of those neighborhoods that were administered by CEE grants, the recipients had incomes greater than the neighborhood's median income, at times double and triple. Helping the poorest residents was simply not what happened in the programs, what another research found. I can kind of go on and on about stories of other researchers having firsthand data studying, in particular, the time period that you're most interested in, the NRP period between 1993 and 2001, or, you know, the NRP period as a whole, that I think our findings are very consistent. So, I think at this point, the burden of saying that this was not the case would be on the, for, for other people to sort of bring their own set of data that would challenge not just this study, but studies for the past 30 years.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Madam. I had mentioned to the Chair earlier that, given Robert Thompson has done an analysis, I'm going to ask that we take up that analysis in Committee of the Whole in the next cycle so that we can hear another set of data. But to be honest, I'm not really interested in fighting old fights, and I know you're not either. What I'm interested in is putting forward an equitable program going forward.
Sure.
And how do we create a program that meets the city's overall racial equity goals, the same time doesn't tell neighborhoods they suck and that they're not doing good work, and yet we still want to make them do things? And this is the part that I don't think that your study really took into effect, that we tell neighborhoods, "Do the community engagement for that. Create these events for this. Review these land use applications. Communicate about new bus lanes." We're asking them to do all this stuff.
Sure.
And we're not really taking into account that we should probably compensate them in some way for that work that they're doing.
Sure.
And when they collaborate and rise to a higher level and meet larger city goals like equity, then there should be grants available to partner and to work together. And I think that's, I think I can summarize, that's almost what everyone on the Council thinks, that we want to have everything we do happen with a racial equity lens, but we don't want to tell the people who have worked for free in neighborhoods for however many years, "You guys suck. You didn't do a good job. You've created the structural inequality in the city." Everyone has participated in the structural inequality of the city, in the school system, and in all of the systems. And I feel like this has turned into this us versus them situation, rather than a "How do we do better going forward" situation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if that is the, the, the basis of this report. It's the city. It's our responsibility, in fact, who failed, if there was any failure. But I do want to acknowledge Councilmember Conno and then Councilmember Cunningham.
Can I just say, just very clearly, I've never said that counts, that Neighborhoodd Associations suck. In fact, there's a number of people that we work very closely with, and we think do a lot of really good work that we have centered as part of this process. So, I just, I'm not okay with that characterization that we think Neighborhoodd Associations suck.
I think they feel that. You might not have said it, but.
Some feel that way.
Multiple, multiple ones in my word feel that way, not just one.
Good for them. There's a question.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. So, I appreciate this, this, this information. I really do value getting information from professionals and experts who have had time to look at this for more than, you know, the, the couple of hours or, I don't know how long we'll be talking about this today. But I want to thank you for, for bringing this forward because, you know, I've, I've heard a lot of verbal history about this program, and all of it relates to exactly what you're saying right now. And so, it's, it's sort of interesting to me that what I would sometimes dismiss as maybe like a one-sided story or a rumor, I'm kind of seeing now with, with numbers and statistics, and, and I'm trying to sort of weave the story together here. I wanted to offer some, I wanted to offer my colleagues and the public a tool here that I picked up during my organizing days, working with Sal Miranda and the Organizing Apprenticeship Project, and Beth Newkirk, and Julia Freeman, which is, relates to racial equity and, and policies. And it's, it's, the whole point is about not looking at people's intent, like, "Did you mean to be racist? Did you mean to be mean to me?" But more about, what is that outcome? What is the practical, tangible outcome that the set of decisions that were put in place give us? And so, I want to encourage us to put our feelings on hold and not put on the dress that's being displayed at the, at the front of the, the room. I'm just saying in Spanish that I probably can't translate exactly here, but you, we're not, we're not saying, "Here, try this on, it's for you." We're saying, "Here's the information. Let's analyze it. Let's dig into it." And so, don't, don't get emotionally whetted to this information, but really look at the, the outcomes and the tangible information that's being presented to us. And then, lastly, I do want to make a note about, I'm interested, as we continue this conversation, to look at the differences between wealth-building initiatives, which would be considered a homeownership initiative, versus some of the do-gooder work that some neighborhoods will, will claim and saying, "Well, we created so much affordable housing in our neighborhood, and, and look at all the, all the rental units that we made available for folks." Those are important, but I want to be clear that, that renting into perpetuity for communities of color is a wealth extraction initiative. It doesn't build the wealth. It doesn't build the equity. It doesn't build the stability that our neighborhoods need. And in fact, when the foreclosure crisis hit, neighborhoods like Powderhorn and others in terms of the Latino community were. in terms of the Latino community, were devastated by that, where Latino families who had worked extremely hard to just have that, that mortgage and to have that home, were evicted from their, from their houses. And I would have horrible stories about people going in to buy these homes with like warm clothes still in the dryer because the family had just been evicted a day or two before. So the whole point here is that I do think some of the work that this money has done has been to secure affordable housing opportunities under a rental paradigm, like a renters paradigm. But I'm curious to see how much of that staying power and wealth building and equity building initiatives have transferred on to communities of color through homeownership, because I think that that's a piece that we're missing right now in our milieu of strategies when, when it comes to stabilizing communities. So thank you. It was more comments than questions.
Sure, yeah, still working through it. Yeah, so I think one of the things.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cunningham, do you have a question?
Yes, but I'm, I'm okay with you responding to Councilmember Conno if you'd like. Okay.
I received what she said.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a couple of things I just kind of want us to be able to take a step back. I would like to remind folks that the University of Minnesota is a major research institution. We want to be able to pull apart the data and be able to have robust conversations about the methodology. But I think that it's also necessary to remember that we're talking about a major research institution that has led this research. And so we have to take that into consideration when in comparison to someone who has done this work on their own as a resident without the major institution behind them to do the research. So I just, I don't want us to have that false equivalency. And like, the University of Minnesota is a top research institution in the country. So I just want to be able to like remind us that that is the level of expertise that we have here helping us with this analysis. Additionally, I want to just say that what we have, the information we have here in front of us, I do not read it as a moral judgment. I do not see this, and I do not hear or read into the data saying, you are bad people. What we have asked, so it's not a moral judgment of NRP or CCP, what we have asked as a city council is for this consultant to do a racial equity analysis, to be able to help us decide and have an understanding of what does racial equity look like in the context of neighborhood associations. And so we're starting with funding, and how, where money went, and who were the beneficiaries. This is not a moral judgment of that. This is the result. And so we, here we are right now. So here we are right now with this information. And the reason why Councilmember Jenkins and I, who are both on the Steering Committee for Neighborhoods 2020, the Enterprise Internal Committee, is because we want to have a full conversation as a council as to whether or not, based on this racial equity analysis, if we want to continue with asking, and our NCR and KIRA, to shape the next iteration of neighborhood associations to further racial equity. Because I think folks are seeing this information and are beginning to feel uncomfortable with what that actually looks like operationalized. So I think we need to have a conversation about this information. And then, because if ultimately we don't want neighborhood associations to center their work around furthering racial equity, then we need to give that guidance right now to staff and to our consultants. So that is why we want to have this conversation here today. You don't have to respond, I just wanted to create that space so that folks, Ryan, folks, we have a major research institution. This is not a moral judgment, it's data, and then being able to get guidance from the council about what we would like for our staff and consultants to do next.
Yeah, thank you. So I think, just to sort of conclude this piece of it, I think frankly, I'm very unsurprised that this is what researchers have found for the past 30 years, also what we have found in our analysis too. If you told somebody, we want to develop a program to stabilize the single-family home improvement housing market, among other things, in the city of Minneapolis, and you needed to know who are the people who own single-family homes in the city of Minneapolis, it wouldn't be surprising that a majority of that fund went to white folks. Any more than it would surprise you that if you said, we're focusing on single-family home improvement plans, we did more for single-family home improvement houses than rental housing, right? It should, both of those, it was the construction of the program from its beginning that led to results like this. Like, we still have the widest gap between white homeowners, black and brown homeowners in the city of Minneapolis today. So if we could do the same thing today, we'd probably get the very same results, just to the construction of who's out there. So I think in that way, like, I am not talking about any particular actor. Very much, I do not center bad actors in this room, of which there are some. We do not center that in our presentation, because what I want this to be about, I think what we are asked to do is to address the system and to invite neighborhood associations in the city to understand the pathway for doing racial equity, right? A lot of folks want to do racial equity work, but they don't know exactly where to start or where to do it. This is lighting that pathway of like, what could you do around this? So.
Before you continue, we have a comment or a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, NRP had a requirement of 52.5% being spent on housing. And, you know, I mean, I could tell you about all the stainless steel kitchens that were purchased in my ward. So I don't disagree with the fact that a good amount of the money went to that. But that still means 48% of the money went to other things that had nothing to do with single-family homeownership. I lived in the Loring Park neighborhood for 21 years, in a condo. This is a neighborhood with 80-something percent rental.
Correct.
And that money did not go to help single-family homeowners. So I would just love to hear you say, 48% of the money went to all sorts of other things, including racial equity initiatives, and parks, and schools, and all of these other things. In fact, we used to call NRP new programming for parks, new revenue for parks, because so much of the money actually went to park development. But, I mean, it wasn't just about housing. It was also, and they didn't do a good enough job actually on housing, and they were told in the second half of it, they had to do more on housing. So, look, I'm not exactly cheerleading the program. I'm just saying that 48% of the money went to other things that had nothing to do with housing. And there were plenty of neighborhoods with very few homeowners and lots of renters, and they weren't putting stainless steel kitchens in condos at Loring Green. They were actually doing programs for renters and others. So did you not find any documentation to any of that?
So I think, once again, as we talked about, that we particularly focused on the housing aspect of these things. And I said at the very beginning that, yes, 52.5% went to housing, and the other 48 whatever percent went to other things. Once again, by and large, attaching outcomes to race is very hard from what we actually have data for. So I think folks can, of course, talk about good examples. I readily acknowledge that there's a lot of really good examples. One of my favorite being Mercado Central was built partially with NRP money. Some folks have talked about money building Sabathini and other great places. Yes, great money went to a lot of great places. So again, I'm focusing less in this report on the good things because I think we have a lot of conversation about that. We are asked to do a racial equity analysis in particular, so yes, I'm focusing on one aspect of it, which I think is a large aspect of it, but I'm just following the directive of what the council, at least how I interpret the council asks us to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to sort of, I think we're having a really necessary, the beginning of a really necessary conversation, but I also just want to hear what the research team found with the contract that we hired them to do through NCR. So I'm hoping that maybe some of the questions, and especially the, you know, the commentary and debate could be held till the end. As you mentioned, we have two more meetings today, and I want to make sure that we have plenty of time for this debate and discussion. We obviously will need it. But I also just want to honor the work that went into the research team's presentation, and I hope we can hear the rest of it.
Cool. I think we have like 15 minutes left. Is that what it is? So I'm just going to move a little bit, because some of the slides are.
I don't know that you necessarily have to rush through.
Okay.
I think we could take a bit more time, you know, for the next meeting to happen. But I don't think we probably have time to have the full council discussion and debate today, as the Chair, I think, indicated from the beginning, so.
So I think there's at least one last major point as part of this to make. This just shows you, I just want to show you the CPP allocation formula versus KIRA-derived racial equity formula for the purposes of analysis. What you see on your slide today is what today's formula is. So you can see CPP's funding formula, 20% weight on population, 20% weight on diversity, ESL, so on and so forth. If you're a math nerd, you can see on the right in mathematics your formula. This is the map that you would get. So the darker the color, the more money that particular neighborhood would get. And then KIRA used a formula for analysis purpose, what a racial equity analysis or a formula looked like. And so we focused on three populations, Black Indigenous, People of Color, Cospere and households. So those are people who are spending more than 30% of their income on either their rent or their mortgage, with more weight towards folks who are renters. And then those who are experiencing gentrification and displacement, utilizing KIRA's gentrification and displacement research from the past couple of years. So you can more or less see, what we would say, these are the populations in need. Of course, we can talk about a lot of different other categories that we can add into it. What you would start to see is just a lot of high association for what's already there, and you start double counting folks. We can talk about that more too. But more or less, if this is your formula, and it was racial equity formula, it would look closer to this. So the dark, once again, the darker the color, the more money folks would get. I think a better way to actually analyze this is on a per capita basis. So what is our spending on top of each residence head across the city? So in CPP, one of the points I'd like to make about this, you're more or less in an equality-based paradigm today. And so more or less, money is spread evenly across the city, save for a couple of weird things, like in Prospect Park in Northeast, which has less than 1,000 people that live there, $25,000 funded, you'll see it go up, similarly in other parts of the neighborhood. And, and then if you had the per capita funding for the KIRA-developed formula, this is what you would get. So very much a different distribution across the city. Of course, you want to see stratification when you're doing racial equity, remembering sort of those sort of elementary artwork that you might see about racial equity. The person who needs the most to see over the fence, to see the ballgame, or whatever, gets the most, right? So you want to see some level of stratification if you're doing racial equity. And so I'd argue that's what you see here versus the CPP funding formula, which is more based in equality. Lastly, we did an analysis, just an analysis of what would happen with the $25,000 funding base, or what sort of the implication of that from a racial equity perspective. In the last slide, more or less just shows, you see the no base funding on the left, $10,000 base funding in the middle, and then a $25,000 base funding on the right. You can sort of, you can see the equity sort of erode across the system, the higher you raise the base funding. So from an equity perspective, the higher the base funding, the lower you'd see equity. The lower the base funding, the more that you would see equity being the allocation. Of course, knowing that equity isn't just allocation, it's also the work that they do. And so it's only at least, at most, half of the equation. And that would be the other half that is dealt with in the guidelines. I think some folks would argue rightfully that this, in a no base funding formula, is challenging for a lot of neighborhood associations. But I think, remember, we were tasked with a budget-neutral approach to this. So it's not a function of where we think good work is, or whether there's work possible in all these different neighborhoods. It's just a function of how much money's in the pot itself, that I think is part of the conversation. So that was all I had to present, but I'm sure y'all have lots of questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I would move that we receive and file this update. Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the presentation, and especially that last point. I just want to point that out, this idea of a budget-neutral look at this formula. And the reality is that the framework ultimately defunded 25% off of what neighborhood associations get today as an allocation, roughly from 4.1 down to 3.1 million. And by kind of constraining the base pool of funding, it's really forcing an outcome on the other side of the equation, which we're able to see here, which is really that it's giving us a false option between do we invest in a racially equitable way, or do we have enough funding as a base for each neighborhood association in order for them to actually keep the lights on and be able to serve their community and be available to all residents? And I think that that's where we miss as a council in our ask of KIRA, is to only look at part of that equation and not to actually take a look at what does it take and what would be needed from a funding standpoint in order to have both racial equity in the funding and also have a complete network of neighborhood associations that have the capacity in order to do the work that we're asking them to do. So I think that's an opportunity for us and for this work moving forward, in order to look at that overall base pool, to see how we can really get to the best outcomes of both.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I'm going to support the staff direction, or the receive and file. I'm just wondering if you need me to make a motion to invite Mr. Robert Thompson to present his report to the committee at the next Committee of the Whole meeting? Or you're just going to be able to put it on the agenda because I suggested it?
I think we should have a motion.
Okay, I'm going to, well, I don't want to move your, change your receive and file, so I'll just make a separate motion. Is that, that's what Casey's shaking his head. Do you want me to wait until after your receive and files complete?
Um.
Yes, Casey's shaking his head on that too.
Okay, that's fine. So, thank you. We have a question or comment from Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I actually have two questions, if that's okay. So, Mr. Anderson, my first question is, as we have looked at the allocation of funding, we're really starting to see certain parts of the city not getting as much funding as they have historically. So what does that mean in terms of racial, does, like, does that reflective that there isn't racial equity work to do in those parts of the city? Or can you talk to, can you talk more about what racial equity work looks like in terms outside of it?
I love this question. Yes. So I think, for one, yes, folks who need the most should get the most from a racial equity perspective, just in a very simple way. But I also think, you know, I've had a lot of conversations, in particular, folks who are in Palmasanos District, our ward, as well as Johnson and Schrader's, who I think are looking at this sort of, you know, with a lot of tension. But I also think that there's really good organizations. One of my, some of my favorites are NINA. I think Armitage is another really good example, who want to do powerhouse racial equity work, right? Who want to do on the racism training, who want to organize tenants in their neighborhood, who want to do all different sorts of things. And I think from my perspective, I think the city should look upon that work favorably, and it deserves to be funded. And so I think whenever folks sort of ask me this question, I think racial equity work is possible and needs to be done in every single corner of the city, right? I think, full stop, right? So I think if you accept what I'm talking about from a racial equity analysis of, say, NRP 1 and 2 and CPP as well, right, $300 million, $300 million plus of investment that might have been done and, or was done in a racially inequitable way. At $4.1 million today, it would take 100 and 150 years in order to match it, if we started to do the right thing today, right? And so I think that's sort of a political question, a social question that we have to ask. But I think that's buttressed with, do I believe, is there good equity work to be done in each corner of the city? Absolutely. And so I think I've been having a lot of conversations with those neighborhood associations. So I think some folks do like the work that we're doing, or do view this conversation as very much needed. And I think KIRA will continue to do that work with those groups, and I think there's work that's possible.
If I may ask another question?
Yes, and I'm just going to ask my colleagues, there's a number of people in queue, if we can really try to keep it moving.
Sure.
Okay. Can you, so I know that another pain point thus far in the process has been around community engagement and how that has been done. Can you please give some more information about the community engagement process and the logic behind it?
Sure, sure. Yes. So, yeah, so a lot of it was, of course, we're working with a very short timeframe, which I think y'all knew when you made the directive to staff. More or less, we tried to, of course, gather all the different neighborhood associations and different stakeholders across the process, primarily through the large gatherings that we had, which had very good attendance across. But then we also made a very intentional direction to bring folks who were not part of this process and/or who were not able to show up in those large gatherings, feeling safe to have the conversations that they really wanted to have. And so we made a very intentional effort to particularly reach out to BIPOC residents and renters across the city. And so we hosted a committee along with that. And we got a lot of, we also did a number of interviews, one-to-one, across the city, to also really understand folks. So we engage people who work in neighborhood associations as well as who don't, those who are in the organizing community, community, those who are doing particularly organizing around racial equity, to sort of really understand their thoughts. And so I think there's a lot of commentary that came in at one time, sometimes in different places. Sometimes that was because we wanted to protect individuals' privacy and ability to show up authentically. up authentically in this process as well.
Councilmember Gordon, then Council President Binder, Councilmember Conno, and Palmasano.
Well, I know we're going to have lots of opportunity to discuss this going further, and I don't want to take up too much time. I did just want to say, I really appreciated this work. I appreciated you kind of getting some kind of lens so that we could measure this through and with kind of an understandable list of criteria. I think it's on the previous slide, but that was, that was, that was very helpful, and I think this will be very informative moving forward. I did think that there was something about our CPP formula that was supposed to be needs-based and look at more as just population. So I think it was a more complicated formula, and it would be interesting, as you can see, it's pretty complicated. It would be interesting to compare that with the idea of just looking at four variables. I think you looked at four variables, three, okay, which is even simpler, because I think the, it would be much easier for people to understand if we had a really clear view and a clear lens. And I also just want to note that it shouldn't be surprising to any of us that have been around a long time that there would be some implicit bias that was baked into a lot of the stuff that we were developing over the years. And back in the 1990s, and we weren't even noticing. And I was involved in the NRP group at the time, and we worried about who's on our board and those kinds of things, but not much. And we weren't nearly as aware back then of what kind of implicit bias is going on. We didn't even know all the restrictive covenants that existed in our neighborhood that had laid up, who were the homeowners at the time. And so it's not shocking that when we looked at what's going into, you know, these programs that were already built on past structural racism, that there wouldn't be these kinds of issues. But it's great to see some of the details, and I recognize that the CEE home loan program is a slice, it's one example that we had good data for, but it's, but we certainly weren't collecting all sorts of demographic data for everything else. I think it's great if we don't spend a whole lot of time fighting over this information, but we move forward and see what we can do and what we can do and build on it. And I know that it has created a lot of angst in the community, but I think it's valuable and it's insight, and we can try to do better as we step forward. And I just thought I'd make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Binder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Councilwoman Cunningham and yourself, and those who were optimistic enough to really insist that we take a pause and do this kind of analysis, and the folks at, in the NCR department and KIRA, who really worked very quickly to bring something together. I didn't support the motion that allocated the $25,000 base amount, and I think Councilwoman Conno very articulately articulated what my gut was saying. But you have shown us with data what I think a lot of us sort of thought might be true. The cynic in me wasn't sure that the vote count would change with more information, and I'm still not sure that, what will happen. But I hope that we will all really take this to heart. And I also wanted to mention that we do have two other system-level analysis happening within the city, one about how we're communicating with our constituents and external communications, and another about how we're doing community engagement as a city enterprise. I couldn't agree more that we are not giving neighborhood organizations enough resources to do the very challenging and deep work of organizing and doing engagement. And I actually think that the city of Minneapolis needs to do a much better job of setting the groundwork for engaging on the decisions that we're making as a city. That neighborhood organizations are incredible partners, but it isn't realistic to rely on largely volunteer-based organizations to do outreach for so much of the decisions that we're making as a city, that the, that the burden really rests on the city to do better at the beginning, and then welcome in partners like our neighborhood organizations. So just appreciate that very much. Wanted to remind especially about those two other sort of system-wide analysis that we're doing of communications and community engagement.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just seeking clarification on the discussion that was brought forward about the, I don't know, the shadow report, the minority report, I don't know what to call it, but I'm unclear as to what that, what that suggestion is, and I wondered if there could be clarification. I'm happy to support, of course, the receive and file of the city-approved process that we, that we took on through a transparent RFP and applications, and the research that was done with the University of Minnesota and with our folks here today. But I'm likely not going to be able to support adding another report to the filing of this, just because, you know me, I'm a process person. If we don't have a process for soliciting or inviting other reports or other opinions, it feels inequitable, and it feels like there's lack of transparency about how we are inviting people into this conversation, into this presentation. I also know that the person who, whose name is attached to this other document, it used to be an employee of the city of Minneapolis, and specifically an employee in the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. So I immediately have just conflict of interest questions that I haven't had the chance to talk to our city attorney about, or much less our other staff members about. So I just need clarification about kind of like, what is that intent? And like, what is the motion here before us? And if we are soliciting more reports to be added to the public comment today, whether it's a motion by a Councilmember Goodman or others, then we should probably solicit more reports from other groups and make it just, you know, everybody.
I just want to clarify, the motion that we are discussing right now is to receive and, we file, receive and file this report, and then the subsequent motion to introduce another report, and then we can have discussion, and we can answer your question at that point.
Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like this conversation about how we learn to get better communicating as a city, and part of that is our own work. We've gone through, we've done an audit, we're really looking intentionally at that work. And as you mentioned, my neighborhoods have also been looking at that very intentionally, and they really want to do some of this race equity work, and they want the ability to function and to still be neighborhood organizations themselves. So from, from the perspective of the neighborhoods that I represent, racial equity work is needed in every corner of our city, and how we do that looks a lot different across our city, right? Which is part of the value of asking neighborhood associations to be part of it because of their reach, right? But my question is, did KIRA look at what minimum funding would be necessary for any neighborhood to do race equity work in addition to the work that they're doing today? Or was that out of scope?
So, from the perspective of the steering committee, that was out of scope. We proposed to look at a budget-neutral amendment, and frankly, it would be beyond budget-neutral, if you wanted to have both of the, both of these things together.
If we wanted to have functional neighborhood organizations and be able to do racial equity.
Right, yeah. And I think there's a lot of, there's a couple of questions that I would have about that. So one of the things that has really come out of this process is that neighborhood associations view themselves as independent organizations. So part of the question is, is it the city's responsibility to fund all of the work of neighborhood associations, or is it just the racial equity work? At least for me, I haven't heard like a clear, this is what we want you to analyze. But that would be my first question. And then, yeah, I think there's a lot of sort of deeper analysis. It would be more money than what's currently in the pot, I know that for sure, in order for all neighborhoods, all 70 neighborhood associations to do racial equity work.
So I just want to point out-
And be fully funded to do so.
That that's an important point, that I don't know that we're asking all of our neighborhood associations to shift their mission, which in the past has generally been community engagement, and we can do a lot better at that through a race equity lens, to being race equity as their core mission kinds of organizations. And it sounds to me like the KIRA study looked at what it would take to focus entirely on race equity, and perhaps one of the pieces that had been missed in this scope was what would be required to do any operations at all and keep these 80-something neighborhood organizations alive.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not sure if it makes sense now or later, but as we get into the conversation of what it takes for an organization to do this work and the amount of money, one thing that I've found missing is just the unspent fund that, funds that neighborhood organizations have. It was one line in your report. Wasn't sure if you're going to get into it today, but-
I accidentally skipped it, yeah. There's $35 million of-
Well, so I'd like to bring a staff direction. I just emailed it to the clerk and distributed it to my colleagues, just to report back at the next meeting of COW, to just have the unspent funds as of December 31st this number's. They've already, we talked with staff, they already have this data. I think it would just be good for all of us up here to have the, kind of the full story.
I'm going to ask the clerk, do I need to take up this staff direction before the current motion?
Madam Chair, it's up to you. You could roll them into one motion, or you can separate them out completely. Currently, the receive and file motion is before you, but if it made sense, you could roll it into one motion.
If that's the will of the body, I will include Councilmember Schrader's staff direction, along with the motion to receive and file the KIRA report. And seeing no other discussion, Councilmember Cunningham, followed by Council President Binder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually just want to build off of what Councilmember Palmasano, the point she made is, I think that we as a council, a part of the conversation that we need to have and direction we need to give is, first off, are neighborhood organizations independent-operating 501(c)(3)'s, or are they extensions of the city? There is mixed messaging around that. And because one of the challenges is that if we have independently operating 501(c)(3)'s, that we are essentially fully funding, but then are not also extensions of the city, it gets murky. So I think we need to have some clarification around that, because then that changes around the conversation around base funding. Because what we're really seeing here, to Councilmember Palmasano's point, is really specifically if the money that is allocated to neighborhood associations specifically focuses on racial equity. It's not about operations, it's not about all the other existing programming necessarily. This is shifting the dynamic between the city and neighborhood associations, from neighborhood associations essentially being independent nonprofits, extension, also extensions of the city, to independent, independently operating 501(c)(3)'s, and the city is a grantor. So it changes that, that dynamic and clarifies that. So I think that that is a part of what the conversation we need to have as council members around what, in this next iteration of neighborhood associations, what is the clarified relationship between neighborhood associations and the city? So I just wanted to uplift what Councilmember Palmasano was saying, and just really name that that's something that we, we as a council need to give direction on and be clear about what that means in terms of, it might be just, it might be hard for us to do a both-and, where, within the budget-neutral approach, which, as a person who came forward with the staff direction, with the multitude of deliverables, sorry, team, I, based on conversations I had with colleagues, there was an overwhelming desire for it to stay within the but, current budget allocation. And so I just, I want to name that logic, that that kind of was not necessarily just at a whim. Folks wanted to keep the scope within what we currently have, because of the fact that there are property tax implications and whatnot. So there, there are, and within that, again, we need to figure out what the relationship is moving forward between the city and neighborhood associations, and I think that's what we really see here before us on these maps. Thank you.
Council President Binder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I put myself in queue to say the same thing, but I think it's actually worth saying many times in many different ways. And that's why I think the second staff direction that came at the same time, which is about this bigger look at how we are doing community engagement as a city, is so important. Because if we don't understand the enterprise's approach to community engagement, it's very difficult to understand how neighborhood organizations fit into that. I also appreciated, when I got the chance to meet with the team one-on-one, thinking about this from the lens of a funder, fundy relationship, like a typical foundation to a nonprofit organization. And we have a really different relationship with neighborhood organizations than the Minneapolis Foundation has with grantees, for example. And just starting to think through, what, what is the appropriate level of specificity in the grants that we are giving? What is the clear purpose and direction of the expectations back for taxpayer dollars? And then what do we do in this situation where, for example, in my ward, you know, and I don't think anecdotes are always that helpful, but I've seen amazing grassroots-based work in my ward, and I've also had the situation where a neighborhood organization is officially opposed to something that clearly the vast majority of the constituents of that neighborhood support. For example, opposing affordable housing in a neighborhood that's 90% renter facing massive gentrification. And so it kind of gets to the heart of, how are we balancing all of these give and takes? And then what are we, how are we using that information to make governance decisions in a way that honors the work that's happening, you know, in our communities at the neighborhood organization level? So I really appreciate us returning back to those bigger-picture questions about how we're doing community engagement and how neighborhood organizations fit into that.
Councilmember Schrader.
I just got in queue for Councilmember Ellison. I didn't bring my computer, but, so, thank you. I just wanted to thank KIRA and thank Mr. Anderson for coming through, saying Mr. Anderson makes me sound like I'm in The Matrix or something. But I just wanted to thank, thank you and your team and KIRA for giving us this research. And to say that, you know, when it, if there are folks who have differing research and differing opinion, I'm happy to hear that info as well. But I do think it's important that the existential question around neighborhoods is for us to answer, you know, maybe not KIRA to answer, and the question around, and making sure that the neighborhoods know and feel validated in the good work they have done, I think that that's sort of our responsibility, again, not KIRA's responsibility. And so, so I just wanted to name that. And, and again, I saw this work as KIRA going out and saying, you know, if you want to invest in, if this is the goal, here's what it looks like. Give us the information to make solid decisions. And then plugging this in to make informed decisions and figuring out what that looks like on a policy level, once, now that we have this really great information, I think I see that as our, as our role, and not the consultant's role. So I want to thank you for being thorough, and thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to, again, furthering this debate and, and speaking more with my colleagues about it.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the current motion, which is to receive and file the KIRA racial analysis report, as well as a staff direction to directing neighborhood and community relations staff and the development finance division staff to provide a report to the City Council Committee of the Whole, which is not this works Home Committee, but I will just note that, at its February 26 meeting, that shows the balance of unspent funds, both contracted and uncontracted, held by neighborhood organizations as of December 31st, 2019. This report should include overall unspent funds at the citywide level and each neighborhood's organization total unspent NRP and CCP funds. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. And that motion carries, and we now have a second motion made by Councilmember Goodman. And that motion is to invite Robert Thompson to present his data analysis on NRP funding at the next regular meeting of COW. Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the first thing I would say is, I am unaware of a process where we've had to take a vote to get something onto the COW agenda. In the last meeting, without anyone's permission, the chair had the roof depot people come and talk to us for 20 minutes, and there was no vote on that. And maybe there should have been, but there wasn't. have been, but there wasn't. So I feel like I'm being held to a higher standard to give someone an opportunity to speak. I'm talking about 20 minutes for him to just go over his report. And then since we're already taking up the other issues in committee on that same day, we can, people can discuss it if they want, or they can just happily say thank you for your work and hear it. And I, I think that that would be, at a minimum, the least we could do to, to a group of people as well as an individual who has had 20-plus years at the city, who has worked with many different neighborhood organizations. He actually was the CLPC, Loring Park, staff person before he came to the city. So he's not a bad person with some evil minority report. He has a slightly different point of view. And I would also ask him to show the same respect that Mr. Anderson showed today. I didn't feel any animus or negativity for Mr. Anderson, and I'd call it out if I did. And I would ask Mr. Thompson to do the same. And I'm sure perhaps the CURE team would be here and it would help a dialogue between them, if nothing else, to help heal some of the bad feelings that are going on. I don't, I, I'm somewhat surprised that I'm being asked to even make a motion to do this, given that that's normally not the process that we've used to bring things up in committee. But since the chair asked me to make the motion, I have.
Councilmember Connaught.
Well, I was going to say something different, but now that Councilmember Goodman has brought up the issue of precedent, my question is, is now more about process. I agree that it is not good for us to seem to favor one group over another when they want to come to speak at our meetings. I'm wondering if the city clerk has any guidance? Because now I feel like some of the, the wind under my, my wings have been taken away here a little bit. So I don't know. Is there, is, I mean, do, do we have a recommendation about how these kinds of matters are taken up at, at, at COW here?
So the way that, Madam Chair, the way that items come before the committees are, of course, they're referred from the City Council. There is an action we take at every City Council meeting to refer to the proper standing committees, the petitions and referrals and matters referred to them. This item is coming up outside of the cycle. Certainly that could have been part of Friday's council action. I think that's between the council member asking for this to be done at the next committee and this committee's chair. The chair indicated at the beginning that we'd take a motion to go ahead and allow or invite this other presentation of data. And because that would be subject to the body to say, yes, we want to hear from someone else on this same matter and hear a different perspective on that research, it would be for the body to say, yes, we want that. So it's not inappropriate to have that matter come before the body to vote. It's not necessarily also something that would be required under the council's rules. So I think it's just a matter of preference on to how that was done. And you could consider this as a matter of giving notice of that being done.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I don't support adding that to the agenda next month. We've hired a consultant to do this work. We heard from the consultant. I think if we have a public hearing on this matter with a decision point before the council, that would be an appropriate time for members of the public or interest groups or any organizations to come forward and share their opinions. We've gotten an email with lots of information. There'd be an opportunity to meet one-on-one, as many stakeholders do with policymakers, to share that information. But I don't personally think it's appropriate to put that on the agenda next month, next week, whenever.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also cannot support this motion to bring this forward because as Council President Bender said, we have a consultant that went through the process to be selected to be the, the, the partner in this work. The additional research that is asked, being asked to be brought forward before the City Council, while this person has 20 years plus years of experience, and I don't want to disparage anyone, but this is a specific person that's asking for this information to be put before City Council, used to be an employee of the city and has been vocal about their displeasure with NCR. And, and I think that not having a neutral, a neutral party bringing data before the City Council is not good information for us to be able to use to analyze for the work. We were sent it, the report. Happy to read through it again. It can be submitted for a public comment, but I don't believe that it's appropriate for this to be brought before the body.
Councilmember Gordon.
Well, it did seem to me that maybe this report could be included in the public record since we've referred to it many times today and we do have a PDF of it, I believe, that we can get access to it. I've reviewed it and it's interesting. I'd be much more comfortable if this was something that occurred during agenda setting and the chair of the committee had an opportunity to talk to staff about it. Because maybe we'd find out that staff would, would welcome the opportunity to have a deeper discussion and use some of the information that is gleaned from another outside report. So it's a little bit awkward. And I haven't really got the impression of the, the committee's chair or staff about putting this on the agenda or not. And I'd rather go through a different process to get here. But I'm also fairly neutral on it. It might prolong a little bit of the anxiety over the whole issue too, and, and the drama. It's unnecessary because I'm anxious to move on to setting our policy and getting to the guidelines and completing the process.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did actually have an opportunity to ask the chair about it earlier today, so this was not a surprise to her. I'm just wondering if, like, for example, the MPHA resolution, did that get voted on, be moved to committee? It feels like there's a double standard here, and I just want to call it out. So I'd ask the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Seeing no further discussion on the motion, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Connaught.
No.
Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
No.
President Bender.
No.
Chair Jenkins.
No.
There are six ayes and seven nays.
That motion does not prevail. And so I would ask the, the maker of the motion to, let's have a discussion about doing a presentation at some future committee. We will now move to our reports of committees and begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by Chair Goodman. And again, I should thank the CURE staff and NCR for the, the analysis report that they presented today. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Goodman.
Well, I might invite Robert Thompson to my committee then. I'll let you all know if that's going to happen, because apparently that's what you get to do. You just get to bring up stuff on your own committee, whether we vote on it or not. So I just want to note, I might bring that to my committee. And I guess you'll all find out about it when it's on the agenda. The EDRS committee is moving forward a number of items of importance, eight in total, for the council meeting on Friday. The most notable item is the reappointment of the Regulatory Services Director, Kim Keller. And that was a very positive public hearing. Item number two is Mary Ellen's Bistro. It's a new license. Item number three is a new license for butcher salt. Item number four are the liquor license approvals. And five is a license for Quincy Hall. Item six are grant applications to Hennepin County's Environmental Response Fund. Item seven is a contract amendment with Employ Milwaukee. And item number eight was a staff direction drafted by Councilmember Ellison, and it's noted in your packet below. This is with regard to answering a couple of questions about the small business work happening in the city. And I'll just read these out loud. How can the city create consistency as it relates to community engagement and the collection of feedback when it comes to interfacing with small businesses? Could the city collect or access data that would further help inform its policy decisions related to small businesses? And given that the private market has perpetuated inequality in access to capital for Black, Indigenous, and people of color, small businesses, how can the city create or modify its existing programs to assist businesses struggling to access capital? And we had a good conversation about this, and this was unanimously approved in committee on Tuesday. And with that, I'll happily answer any questions, one through eight for approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, our next committee report is the Enterprise Committee, given by Chair Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Enterprise Committee submits six items for your consideration at this Friday's council meeting. Item number one, our changes to our vacation leave benefits for future and current individuals in appointed positions. I need to take this time to also remind you all that tomorrow's study session, starting at 10:30 a.m., is on all of our leave program benefits. I'll be helping to facilitate that study session. Item number two is a contract amendment with the Minneapolis Police Crime Lab Unit. Item number three is a contract amendment for 311's Legan system. Item number four is a contract for software solution for utility billing and then public service building. Item number five is Councilmember Fletcher's data privacy principles, which I hope you've had a chance to take a look at. And it's an interesting direction for us to be involved in as a council. Item number six is a staff direction to consistently and transparently measure our data practice requests at Enterprise Committee going forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, the next committee report is the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The Housing Policy and Development Committee will be bringing forward five items for consideration at our meeting on Friday. The first is a land sale at 3723 Aldrich Avenue. Second item is a resolution authorizing issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue entitlement bonds for the Trinity Apartments at 2831 Street East. Third item is authorizing amendments for various outstanding city homebuyer assistance loans. Fourth item is accepting the 2019 Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Demonstration Account Grant Awards. And the fifth item is a consideration of a staff direction that was moved forward without recommendation to create a, or to erect some staff to work on potential long-term funding options to support the preservation, repair, and creation of public housing. And return to the Housing Policy and Development Committee with some recommendations and time to inform the 2021 budget process. I'm going to be coming forward with a substitute staff direction with a couple minor amendments that came from the Public Housing Executive Director, had some suggestions for changes after the meeting. And the idea behind this is to see what kind of consensus that we might have around some options for better supporting our public housing needs in the future. It certainly would be just to develop some recommendations and take some time to actually talk about it. And I'm happy to stand for questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions, our next committee report is the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee. That report will be given by Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, first, before we get started, just reviewing the, the five items, I just also want to make clear that the Neighborhood's 2020 work, the Home Committee, is the Peace Committee. And the reason why we presented here today was because of the specific racial equity analysis is within the scope of the Race Equity Subcommittee. So just to clarify, because that kind of came up a couple of times. So the Home Committee is, because the engagement focus falls within the Peace Committee, and today it was a racial equity specific presentation, which is why it came to the Subcommittee. So on that note, there are five items that will be brought forward for approval on Friday. The first is, is approving the reappointment of Director of Civil Rights, Phil McCorville, to the Director of Civil Rights. Item number two is approving the reappointment of Gretchen Music Camp to the Commissioner of Health/Health, Director of Health Department. Item number three is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the UNICEF USA to support UNICEF's Child Friendly Cities Initiative. The first cycle of the Child Friendly City Initiative recognition is five years from the signing the MOU. As a quick aside, I just want to name that we will be the first city in North America that will be signing an MOU. And we are on track to be the first city in North America designated as a UNICEF child-friendly city. Item number four is directing the Office of Violence Prevention to convene and lead a work group tasked with developing a proposed community center plan to respond to critical incidents of violence in the city of Minneapolis. And item number four is directing the Health Commissioner to work with the Director of the Youth Coordinating Board to assist with the Youth Master Plan implementation and use to help guide the city's work with young people over the next five years. And the second component, or the second part to that is directing the Minneapolis Youth Cabinet to review the Youth Master Plan's alignment with existing city and department policies, procedures, goals, and other plans in order to offer support to the plan, identify relevant recommendations to the city to implement, including but not limited to procedure change and piloting new trainings and initiatives, supporting the implementation of recommended action items, including but not limited to providing technical assistance, implementing action items with appropriate departments and staff, and providing continuous implementation support, and participate in the evaluation of implementing recommendations and the plan as a whole in cooperation with the Youth Coordinating Board. So that was a lot to basically say that we want to make sure that we are aligning city investments, city programs, city initiatives to be able to have the best outcomes for young people possible. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing none, the next committee report is the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. That report will be given by Chair Connaught.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee is bringing forward three items today. Item one is authorizing a contract with Logis for workforce director, for the workforce director system. Item number two is authorizing a contract with the Downtown Improvement District for the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District Summer Police and Police Reserve Program. And the last item is accepting a gift from the Minne, ugh, the Minneapolis Police K-9 Foundation for equipment, K-9 training, and travel-related costs. I would like to move all of these items forward for our committee, and we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Connaught. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by Chair Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee forwards seven items. Items one and two are resurfacing project approvals and assessments for the locations listed. Items three and four are contract amendments for work of the department. Item five is a joint powers agreement with Columbia Heights for the, the shared 37th Avenue Northeast Project. Six is the bid for Hennepin Avenue Downtown Roadway Street Escape Reconstruction Project. And seven is the, was the 2020 Transit Equity Day honorary resolution. Madam Vice President, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Ways and Means Committee. And we have been joined by Councilmember Worsami, and he will give that report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee brings 12 items for approval on Friday. Items number one to five are legal settlements. Item number six is a bid for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, an air handle, air handler coil project at the Target Center. Item number seven is a contract amendment with Premier Electrical Corporation for Minneapolis Convention Center lighting updated project. Item number eight is contracts with Piper Sandler, RBC Capital, Marcus LLC, Doherty &amp; Co. LLC, and Robert W. Byrd &amp; Co. Incorporated for bond underwriting services. Item number nine is an appointed position in the Finance Department, and this is for the manager of investment, investments and debt management. Item number 10 is an appointed position in the 911 Department, and this is for the Director of Minneapolis Emergency Communications Center. Item number 11 is an appointed position in the City Coordinator's Office, and this is for the Deputy City Coordinator, and this is for engagement. And the final item is a collective bargaining agreement, and this is for the Convention Center Production Technicians Unit from 2020 through 2022. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Worsami. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by Chair Schrader.
given by Chair Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward set up items for approval on Friday. The first two are the denial of separate appeals at the property at 407 15th Avenue Southeast, 1412 and 1428, 5th St. Southeast, and 1413, 1417, 4th St. Southeast. The third is the denial of rezoning at that same property. The fourth and fifth are the certification, the granting of an appeal for the certification of a non-conforming use. For one is for the property at 3342 Nicollet Avenue. The other is at 818 West Broadway. Those are both kind of owned by Burger King Corporation. The sixth is the passage of an ordinance on Parkland dedication. And the seventh is the passage of an ordinance regulating the existing, of existing off-premises advertising signs and billboards near regional sports facilities, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chair Schrader. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Audit Committee, given by Chair Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, Audit Committee is an independent committee of council, but we do forward some things to our bodies that need to be forwarded. The items coming forward for Friday is to direct the city clerk to transmit a summary document about our license plate reader audit report, and also our body worn camera biennial audit report to the state of Minnesota as per state law. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Executive Committee. However, the Executive Committee is not bringing anything forward this cycle, and so seeing no further business before this committee, we are adjourned.
Madam Chair. Can I just do a quick note? I know we adjourned the meeting, but I just want to let colleagues know, in just a few minutes, the IGR committee is going to be hearing on the CON rule and redistricting, and it affects all of our wards and the potential future elections. So it's a pretty important, able to stick around, that would be great. Thanks.